And Madam President, I think you will move to the first agenda item.
Yes, thank you. 2016 Act 266, Order of Tax Incidental Financial Improvement of Granite Telecommunications Corp., Fox Bronx, Carriage One Realty LLC, 61 Carriage Drive. Would you have a representative here to speak on the matter in a moment? Here.
Good evening. As President, Members of the Council, I am here for the training conference in the Mayor's Office. We have Representative Ray Currie, Chief Operating Officer for Granite Telecom, to come speak tonight. In a few minutes. Now, we have Assistant Secretary, please look down at the back of the state. If you could offer a few words with your presentation. We are respectfully requesting consideration of approval of the loss of Fox Bronx 31 Realty Granite Telecommunications Tax and Granting Plan as a grant. As many of you may know, Granite Communications started as a small company back in 2002 and has over the past 14 years grown and expanded into a campus style, so a new board half extension of 1,300 employees. They wanted to bring all 1,300 employees here to talk to me, but they did bring a couple of representatives, employees that are Queensy residents. The company is playing an understanding of the 461's Enterprise Drive to accommodate their growth and expansion. In an effort to keep companies like Granite Telecom from moving to other communities and to others to other states, State Massachusetts offers incentives, being the economic development incentive program, which is a two-part plan. Part of it is an incentive from the state investment tax credit and part of it is a tax income client plan, which is offered by State. The TIP plan we're asking you approve today includes a 20-year TIP plan, years one through 10 at 100% exemption, years 11 through 20 at 90, 86, 70, falling down to 0 in year 37. Property tax exemption as well as a 15-year contribution to Quincy School Community Partnership that Granite Telecom has offered, which over 20 years is $300,000 contribution. The company has agreed to work with the South Coast Area Workforce Investment Board, the new hires who Quincy residents priority, then giving priority to local contractors, vendors, and suppliers that are going to be working on the site. The company's investment in building and leasehold improvements are estimated at $36 million, 30.7 purchase price, plus or minus leasehold improvements. The most important part of this plan is that the company is going to retain 1,283 jobs here in Quincy, which is an estimated 250 new jobs at this new facility. Benefits to the company would be asked for the investment tax credit and the local TIP program. Benefit to the city is to retain a well-respected growing company with net new jobs, substantial financial investment to accommodate economic development incentives to local businesses. With that said, do you have any questions after Rand and Madam President have a few moments to speak?
Great.
Thank you.
Good morning. So my name is Ray Currie, I'm Granite's Chief Operating Officer, I'm one of the founders and a heart owner. So as we in this day, we started the company 14 years ago right here in Quincy. We love Quincy and we'd love to expand and stay here. So we grew from just a million dollars revenue our first year and we are now a 1 billion, 250 million dollar company. We have over 1,700 employees. We have 11,000 customers. We provide communication services to multi-location businesses throughout the country. Some of our biggest customers are Quincy Post Office, Walmart, other big multi-location retailers. So we have offices in addition to Quincy, we have offices in Atlanta, Miami, Orlando, New York, Providence, Chicago, and Dallas. In Massachusetts area, we are the top charitable contributor, number four three years in a row. Some of our significant benefits to the state have been the water bills, the Greer Group Bank, Boston, Otis Mont, Perkins, Wheels on Wheels. Last year, we donated over $4 million to the Bay Harbor organization. Right here in Quincy, we've donated, every week we have a donation. We've donated significant contributions to Quincy Group Bank, Quincy Animal Shelter, Quincy Parks and Conservation, Quincy Parks and Recreation. So we love to be in Quincy, we want to stay in Quincy. We, as Chief Operating Officer, have a challenge. We have a lot of competition in our space, which means low business profitability. We have no outside investors, we have no debt, we're profitable in cash flow positive. We want to stay that way and continue to grow, but we have a lot of competition. Our competition is reducing their costs. We're reducing their costs by a couple of different options. They're putting their labor in the cheapest parts of the country possible and in some cases, some of our base competition are offshoring their labor to the Philippines and Indonesia. We don't do that. We hire here in Quincy for the most part with the folks here expensive, the mostly college degree. It makes our cost of the last service higher. So we've been looking for ways to reduce that cost, to stay competitive. We get solicited pretty heavily by other states and we have signed different deals just in the past six months with some of these other states. However, we would like to stay right here. So in an effort to try to keep our cost low, to maintain about 20 million, if we need to, we're requesting your support.
Thank you. Thanks, Madam President.
What is your name, Madam President?
Good evening, Madam President, good evening, members of Quincy Council. I'm here very proud we have all the labor and the ability to express our support for credit, failure condition. As you know, the company is more than a successful business, but it has also been a very good corporate citizen. Part of my job is to ensure that no job would leave Massachusetts. As a resident of Quincy myself, I do my best to ensure that no job would leave Quincy. And the state is strongly support request of credit failure condition because we also face competition from other states to attract such good company to pay our own. So we are here to share with you that we want to keep Granite in Quincy and do all we can to support the company.
Thank you very much, now. All right, is there anybody who has a question? Yes.
Perhaps we have a representative from the Mayor's Office, Maureen, of your inland things on that end. First of all, before I ask you a question, good evening, but also I just want to say that I think Granite Telecommunications is one of the best businesses we have in Quincy. I spoke earlier tonight about a business that I've had an issue with and I call them not a good community partner. I think as a wood counselor, the best thing I can say about a business is that they are a terrific community partner and I think Granite sets the mold in terms of, you know, good corporate citizenship. They're terrific to work with, all the things they're involved with, including shaving the mayor and the governor's head, which is always fun and I enjoy it. But Rand and Rob, you guys do a fantastic job. I voted on the last TIP we gave you and you were thinking about leaving, so I'm glad you stayed. I'm glad the company's thriving and excited that you're looking to expand here in Quincy. I do have some questions about the financial impact. I think that we have a fiduciary obligation, a fiduciary duty up there as members of the council to really get our hands around the fiscal impact, financial impact. I was, when I was reading the agreement, I was a little bit surprised by the 100% discount in the first 10 years and I didn't have an opportunity to poll other ones to see what we've done in the past, even the one we did with Granite. And I don't know how many have been done in the last eight years that I've been here. I think there've only been maybe one or two. I know there are some existing, but I don't, is that standard, 100% discount for a 10-year period?
Of all the tips we have, they vary, but yes, there are a lot that start with the first 10 years of 100%.
Okay. And so do we have a value on an annual basis for those first 10 years of what that financial impact would be?
I would refer to the assessor's office if I could.
Okay. I could have someone from the assessor's office. 3 million.
Good evening, Council. I would like to discuss that the FY '17 value has increased by 40% over the FY '16 value. The FY '17 value reflects an improvement Campanelli has already made to the building and Granite plans to continue to improve the building for their use as well.
So we've set, so what you're saying that is that?
The base year.
Campanelli already improved it to an assessment of an increase of 40%.
Correct.
That then becomes the baseline.
Or maybe if it's correct.
Right, that becomes the baseline for the calculations for the value of the TIP. What's the, what's the anticipated value of the work that Granite has?
Unfortunately, I can't tell you that having in mind that assessors reflect, you know, the market valuation, you don't predict. You know, I can't make sure that in my discussions with Rand and Maureen, that we do plan to invest additional money to fit us above the values. So at this point, this is going to be the information.
So I, I would like that information. I understand you can't provide that. That's fine.
Right, and each year I keep in mind too, you know, the way the TIP is calculated, the inflation factor apply, along with what's going to change each year at the commercial tax rate or stuff.
Right, but I'm wondering if we would just, to set as a baseline, the numbers this year and just say that those numbers are static rather than dynamic, which we know they are. If they remain static, what that value would be?
Okay, well, the value for FY '17 is 21,628. If you were to take that with, you know, this FY '16 commercial tax rate, you know, that results in $605,000 a year.
They're going to continue to pay?
Correct. The value is never going to fall below that base year.
Right. And are they locked in at that baseline?
Correct.
So even if?
Let's say the market tanks, correct, but that's the base year.
But that's the discount? Right.
No, the discount is only if the exemption is applied to the improvements made in the building for that year.
Right, but what I'm saying is if you start with a baseline number of 20 million dollars, even if it goes below 20 million dollars, that comes off of what?
It's never going to fall below 20 million.
So they're locked in at 20 million dollars even if the market had some horrific tank and?
Correct.
The building's value at 10 million dollars, they're still paying taxes on 20 million?
So the base year, the base year, you know, like I say, is the 20 million, which represents a 40% that increasing value from FY '16. That base year, that assessed value of 21,628 exactly, that value will remain, it will never fall below that value in year one, year two.
In terms of the exemption?
In terms of the valuation, correct.
In terms of the valuation for the exemption?
Correct.
The valuation itself could change and the TIP would become useless because the value has dropped so much, they have more than compensates for whatever the 100% of add-on value that they would be getting the TIP for. Right?
No, I think you're getting confused. For years one through 10?
No, I understand that.
The value's not going to fall below 20 million, that base year value. So then each year, depending on what Granite improves in the building, the exemption would be applied.
Right.
So where we have, so where we have to have?
So they're always paying taxes on 20 million?
Correct.
Even if the building's only valued at 10 million?
The building's at 20 million, it's not going to drop.
There's no way the valuation of the building can drop?
No.
How does that work?
Because that is the purpose of it, this is the base year. The valuation can never fall below what that base year is.
Okay. But there's got to be a way that we can estimate the value of the improvements that were discounted.
Correct. Right, and I can refer that to Granite if they want to go into detail what they plan to improve, but I will say to the assessor's standpoint, the exemption is only applied when they improve to the building.
All right, no, I understand. That's the purpose of the TIP.
Correct.
You get the exemption based on improvement, not based on current values.
Correct.
Otherwise, we'd be better off with the R and D. So I, my understanding, I think, is this going to go into the Finance Committee when we have a hearing on it and we vote on it eventually. If we could get that number, if you could talk to them, if you're all about the value is, what that additional?
Yeah, okay, so we, you know, as assessors, we reflect, we don't predict, you know, and on top of the, you know, what they're going to be improving into the building, you know, for years one through 10, that exemption scale is 100%. So if you wanted to look at it and expect that that valuation is going to be at 20 million, give or take the inflation factor, and then each year with the commercial tax rate set, you know, that's where you're going to have your variation in total tax issue.
Right. What I'm looking for is what the value of the TIP is. So I don't want to wait until 2037.
Correct, but I can't give you that information of what you're looking for.
There's no way in which you can come up with a valuation as to what the value of the TIP is.
Because it all depends what they invest each year. So if they only invest, you know, like I say, if they only invest a million versus they invest 10 million in years one through 10, the exemption is 100%. So you can look at it like, you know, throughout the 10 years, the first 7 to 20, what they invest into the building is always to be examined because the 100% exemption is applied. That base year is going to remain at 20 million. If you ever take that, I'm just, I use commercial rate.
Right. But from a business standpoint, if you have 100% exemption for the money you put into the building for the first 10 years?
That would incentivize you to invest.
To do it in the first year.
Correct.
To do it on the front end of that because you get, you reap the rewards and then you can depreciate those investments and by the time you get to year 11, they're not worth the same value that they were in year one because you would depreciate the improvements. So that's, I guess, what I'm asking is if we can make some assumptions as to what their investment would be and I would imagine we have to have some understanding of what the, I'm sorry, I said assessment improvements.
Correct.
We have to have some understanding of what the improvements are in order to even be contemplating doing it.
Correct, and I think that's a question for Granite.
Right, but rather than asking him how much and then asking you to give me the rate, you know, it's going to go to committee anyway to just ask if we can get, you know, am I going to put you on the spot now to calculate this thing? If we can get that before it comes up for a vote, I think that would be helpful.
Correct.
And if you can't do it, that's as the assessor, because you only look backwards.
But that's what I'm saying, we reflect, so you're asking me to predict what Granite plans on investing and to calculate that into what total taxes and unfortunately, I don't have the capability to do that because I'm reflecting prior valuation, like for calendar year FY '17, I'm looking, right, I'm looking at, well, for fiscal year 2017, I'm looking at calendar year 2015's data. So you have to remember that as the assessors, where, you know, we're always reflecting, we're not predicting. You know, so I feel the question that you're looking for, maybe should be further classification from Granite, you know, where they plan to improve in the building, how much money they plan to improve in the building, you know, but what I have for you is what the assessor's office can make of that.
Okay, well, thank you, I appreciate that. Perhaps for you, Madam President, as you're the Maureen or the Mayor's representative, we could get an economic impact analysis then. If it's not most appropriate to the assessor's office, then we could get, I mean, we've had experts up to Watsu when it comes to downtown predicting value, we, every, on the bond material for what we, when we borrow against downtown future revenues, we're able to predict somehow what the future commercial revenue is, so there's got to be a way to do it.
Counselor.
I believe you'll do the finance.
Yes, so, yes, to the Finance Chair because this is going to committee as you rightly said, so Counselor.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, you know, to Councilwoman, you know, asking me about information in advance if I could, and again, if you heard it, if I was the Chairman, it's now just going to go to committee. I have the boss, and I'd be scheduled for the Sunday fifth. If you yourself, Mr. Gary, or Mr. Currier were available to, to, to stay in Iowa, I think that would maximize everyone's time. But the Sunday fifth is what we're, we're tired of too long, to hear the time, that would allow our audience. Thank you. Do you have any more?
All right, for Finance, thank you, Counselor. Next, Madam President.
Next, Madam President, it's number two on the page, 2016 Act 267. Land dispossession agreement possible, our law, we can talk about law.
Mr. Gary is here to speak.
Thank you very much, good evening, Madam President, and good evening to members of the Council, special counsel there for development. We are introducing for the Council's consideration the assignment to the committee. We first hold a land dispossession agreement as I stated in my transmission, and I'm going to the Council. This LDA, so-called, is in the form as it relates to the structure, if you will, of the deal. There are elements that remain to be analyzed, such as the most important element of appraisal, an independent appraisal of the property approximately 13,000 square feet of municipal property in Hancock Lot. There is the issue also of linear design for a garage, which is an integral component of the proposed development and one which gave much discussion by members of the Council last spring when we were talking about, you already repeated in the fourth. That is an element that is still in process, both in the process. We do hope to have a final appraisal, week after, next week, after this week, so that by the time the Council is ready to take up the matter of more review and discussion and preparation, we should have that information in hand for the Council's consideration. This is obviously the culmination of processes going on, at least that I've been involved with for the last nearly a year, but it was underway prior to my appointment by the Mayor and it is a complex set of interconnected agreements and we don't expect the Council or any individual body to be able to look at this proposed contract in the abstract or without some significant briefing. So as I said in my transmission now to the Council, I will be reaching out to all the Councilors individually with hopefully young committee to meet with the Councilors to go through all any issues that are related to this. Of course, I have kept the City Council's, the special Council, Mr. Jim Shea, a prize of our progress. He was providing with companies of this material and I expect that on behalf as a body, he will, and he will be analyzing the legal aspect of this and quite candidly, he has an advantage over me in this respect because he analyzed the previous land dispossession agreement that was related to Streetworks. Finally, this LDA, as submitted to you this week, we were not really able to submit this to you because it contains provisions that are continued upon the enactment of the formal petition, which was thought approved on November 10th, because there were a number of interconnected issues related to development of garage and other improvements that clearly we're not able to connect to the development of this parcel or a companion parcel, parcel R2, which we implore to, before the end of the year, be in a position to submit for your consideration another LDA as it relates to that particular parcel. So with that, I would request that you get assigned to the committee for your consideration.
All right. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Gary. Is there a question? To the car, to ordinance downtown, ordinance downtown, is that, no, ordinance downtown, it'll get written in this, all right, anything? Yes, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Gary, I appreciate the information. So thrilled that you're not asking us to vote on it. It's a refreshing change of pace where we get something on a Thursday and then its entire intent is that it'll go to committee, we'll have a deliberative experience with it. So thank you for that, look forward to getting into the nitty-gritty with you on this and through our Council, Jim Shea. So Jim, my only question is, you're an attorney.
Yes.
Obviously, us attorneys, we don't take our attorney hats on, so when you were working on this, you were doing this as an attorney for the city as well, correct?
Indeed, indeed I was, however, I was a proxy client because the attorneys who were involved in these negotiations, both on behalf of the designated developer as well as to my capacity representing the city, we had our own expert from an outside law firm, known as Leonard Fishman, who was previously involved in the Streetworks LDA on behalf of the designated developer, Bob Davis, who had previously represented the Streetworks, actually, as I understand. So they, with the referees, so to speak, on behalf of designated developer, gentleman by the name of Paul Casey, who's present here this evening, and on behalf of the city myself, they hammered through what I call the nitty-gritty of the agreement, but many of these elements are elements that I've related in my prior capacity.
Well, good, it's good to have someone like you in the room. Probably for me, if I don't, because, so I look, I look forward to getting anyone else a question, the President, she returns. But we anticipate having a public hearing.
Correct.
And that would be required at some point?
Yes, the Council and the subcommittees that have been assigned.
So that would afford the public opportunity away?
That is correct.
And through you, Madam President, perhaps we could make this available on the city website, somehow, and down the line, we should step away and read and view it.
Mayor's representative is indicating that.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Gary. Thank you. Oh, sorry, you can see, Counselor, again.
No, and again, I stepped in and I made this, but I'm just assuming as we move along, similar to the last time we did a land dispossession agreement, there's going to be some presentation conceptionally of the proposed project if that's the case.
Absolutely, Counselor. It will require presentations. Counselor, from what you've given in your prior comments, referred to experts, the experts for this evaluation issues here, there's independent places, there's the economist who is responsible, Kaden Kim, who has cleared before the Council before, who is involved in the formulation of the form, feeling that would be applied to various financial aspects of the proposal.
You, Madam President, you're right, you worship the many of the areas in terms of this process, and as people have already mentioned, by your way of highlighting information for, we still appreciate the process, so thank you for the work, everything you've done before of this.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Judge. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gary. All right. So that has been referred to ordinance and downtown.
Right.
Next agenda, Madam President.
And there's number three, 2016, 267.
Please give the reading and move that to finance.
Motion with reading, move to finance.
Next on the agenda is number five, 2016, 240. Order, five residents, hold on, please, for the council, the bar, bring in the super close committees, and Shayla, and Professor Jade, that's last. Number seven, on the agenda, 2016, 270, ordinance, hold it, employment plan.
Okay. Counselor.
Wait, the reading?
Counselor J. Yes.
It's a long time. What was that, a motion or a hurry?
All right. All right. There we go. All right, thank you. All right, for the end, our agenda this evening, we will go to approval of previous meeting minutes. The meeting minutes for November 10th as well as November 14th are before you. Is there a motion to accept the minutes? Motion by Counselor Harris. All those in favor? All right. Aye, FBI staff, a free. Minutes are accepted. Communications reports from the mayor, on the city boards, for city officers, Madam Clerk.
I have nothing.
All right. There's a first. All right. Nothing. Great. Thank you. Moving quickly to unfinished business of the preceding meeting. I'm seeing blank steps, so we're going to move quickly through that as well. No unfinished business. Reports of committees, Counselor LaFors.
Thank you, Madam President. Earlier this evening, the ordinance committee was held, brought to, to council order 2016-249, under Title 17, new section, section D.25, so, and, or, district, to add to the amendments, and the, I move positive recommendation.
Positive recommendation by Counselor LaFors, seconded by Counselor Harris. Further discussion of motion. All right. Seeing, yes, Counselor Finn.
Here's a public.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else? Great. Madam Clerk, please call law.
Counselor Finn.
No.
Counselor Paul.
No.
Counselor Paul.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Paul.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Six members.
Great. Presentation of petitions and memorials for Ramon. Yes, Counselor Harris.
Thank you. On Saturday, I just wanted to put a big thank you to my ward, Ward Seck, to the mayor's office. We had a fantastic meeting and all the honours that were on it on Saturday. What a beautiful, it was a beautiful day until it got cold and I didn't wear a jacket, but that's why I didn't say much tonight. But all I can say is that I was proud to be part of it, that's going to be a field that's going to benefit generations to come. And now that really becomes a real campus, North Quincy High School. So again, to all the people in the city hall, mayor's office, everybody who was part of that, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Harris. It was a nice time and it was great up until it did get cold and my son started crying. But at any rate, it was a good morning and afternoon and it was a beautiful field and very grateful to Mayor's Office and to all those who attended. And Counselor Paul?
Yes. Thank you. By way of remonstrance, I just, I wanted to take this opportunity to congratulate a former colleague of ours, a former ward for city councillor, Thomas Fabrizio. I see in the latest City of Quincy directory in fall of 2016, that Mr. Fabrizio has been elevated to special assistant of the mayor. And I think that is certainly worth noting, his accomplishment, risen through the ranks of city government from his early beginnings. So it's with a hearty congratulation that I think we should, especially given this time of Thanksgiving to thank people. You know, there's so much of the national media is focused on the special advisers of the president-elect, who some people may take issue with. I think there's no one in the City of Quincy who could take issue with Thomas Fabrizio being a special assistant of the mayor and being the right man of all the decisions.
I don't know. Has the people a word for it?
Maybe. It certainly has the people a word for it. We like him. So congratulations. And I just asked if we could send a letter to Mr. Fabrizio, congratulate him.
The clerk will draw the video. Yes. Just a second. All those in favor? Aye, yay, we will send a letter to Mr. Fabrizio. Motion, orders, and resolutions. All right. Scheduling of committee hearings or public hearings? Tax rate, public hearing. Okay. Yes. Hello. Hello, Counselor.
Some of it's going to be pretty stacked and jammed up. 6:00 PM, there'll be basically materials of all of our scheduling a housing committee meeting for those folks that sit on housing. 6:30, we'll pick up the discussion in finance regarding the TIF, that we just had, you know, a little bit of dialogue on. And then, much to your point, I believe, 7:00 PM, the public hearing for the tax rate. So action act, be sure you get the rest, some reports.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Paul. Did we already schedule that the tax rate, the public hearing of this tax rate, it's already, yes, at 7:00 o'clock? Okay, great. Anyone else? Committee? Okay, great. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Not before, I don't wish everyone a happy, healthy Thanksgiving. All right. Well, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Thank you very much. And motion to adjourn, picks up. I just shut it down when it really was. Not.